Okay Chair Mitchell, we are live, so you are welcome to start.
Okay. Happy New Year, everybody. I will call the Parks and Rec Commission meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham. Here. Commissioner Bites. Not here. Commissioner Doherty. Not present. Commissioner Shibashi.
Here.
Commissioner Teeter.
Here.
Vice Chair Fidrich.
Oh, you're on mute, Bob.
Sorry about that. Yes, here.
And Chair Mitchell.
Here.
Okay.
Thank you. And we are now going to move forward with the approval of, gosh, what meeting was that? I'm sorry. Yeah, the approval of the regular meeting on November 4th, 2020 of the minutes, please.
I move that we accept those minutes.
Anybody second?
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed objections?
Because we're on Zoom, we do have to have a roll call.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, Becca, you're on mute.
Sorry. Commissioner Abraham.
I accept.
Commissioner Ishibashi.
Yes.
Commissioner Teeter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fidrich.
Approved.
And Chair Mitchell.
Yes, approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're moving forward with presentations. Any presentations?
No.
There's no presentation.
Okay, any oral requests? No oral requests. And now we'll move forward with the announcements of the commissioner appointments.
Yay, so we had the three openings and Todd and I are very happy to have all three of you reappointed to our commission. That would have been a big hole for us, having three new people, so we're very excited to have you guys back for another term. We're looking forward to working with you guys and tonight we have quite a few things to kind of work through as we kind of plan out the year and a very unique year ahead of us, so congratulations to all three of you and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'd like to add my congratulations as well. I'm glad you're all back.
We're happy to. Oh, I'm happy to be back, so.
I want to see that part get done.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thanks Natasha. We're going to move forward with new business. We first are gonna, it's, in January, we typically, well, actually in December, I think we typically do the election of the new chair and vice chair, but we are gonna do the election of a new chair and vice chair. So I'll leave it to Natasha maybe to lead us through that.
Yeah, so as Commissioner or Chair Mitchell had said prior is normally you guys have an opportunity to discuss amongst yourselves and so we don't have that, so tonight there might be a little bit more candid conversation as to who might be interested in taking on one of these leadership roles for the commission. We could probably start with the chair position and then move on to the vice chair. And it can be, if someone would like to suggest another commissioner as this being a potential option for them, or if somebody would like to express their interest in it, we can kind of go from there.
And go ahead.
So is Bob currently the vice chair?
He is.
Okay. I would love to see him move up a step if he feels comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'd love to do that, so thank you for the nomination.
That was easy.
Yeah, I agree. I did know that. It would be nice to see Bob take the chair position.
Okay, and you guys can continue with discussion on this or someone can make a motion.
Can I? I'll make a motion to appoint Bob Fidrich to Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, Commissioner Abraham?
I'm in favor.
Commissioner Shibashi?
Yes.
Commissioner Teeter?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidrich?
Yeah, I'll vote for myself, sure.
And Chair Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm handing the gavel over to you.
Thank you. Partially.
As far as I don't, Sharon and LaRaz, I don't believe you guys have, have you guys held that position, either one of you?
No.
Either one of you want to hold that position?
Well, I was thinking LaRaz would be really good.
I was thinking the same about you, Sharon. To be I I would like to nominate you, Sharon, if that's, if that's all right, if you feel comfortable.
So I come from Civic Improvement Commission where I went through the vice chair and the chair, so if you've not had an opportunity to do that for a city commission, I would love you to have that opportunity.
All right, I'd be happy to.
Yay!
So I would like to nominate then LaRaz as vice chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, please.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Roll call. Okay, roll call. Let's see, Commissioner Abraham?
I'll vote for myself.
Commissioner Shibashi?
Yes.
Commissioner Teeter?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidrich?
Yes.
And Chair Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you.
So do I then take it from this point on today? Okay. All right, moving to next is new business. And we have, we did the elections, so I guess the next thing is committee assignments.
So the current committee assignments for Parks and Creeks Trail, we have Commissioner Doherty as the chair with members, Commissioner Fidrich and Commissioner Teeter for trees. The chair is Commissioner Abraham with members Commissioner Bites and Ishibashi. And then for special events, Chair is Mitchell with members Abraham and Bites. So we can start with the first one of Parks and, Parks and Creek Trails.
Should we try to switch it up a little bit this year?
Or do we want to just switch the three groups and then pick new chairs? I mean, that's another option too, but yeah, I say we switch it up. That's
Well, I have a different opinion. I feel like I was just getting started with the Creek Trails and, you know, with this COVID thing, you know, whole year almost has disappeared, so I personally would like to stay with that unless there's three other people who really would like to switch over.
I would say that Commissioner Teeter can now be the Chair of the Parks and Creek Trail Commission if she, it sounds like she's enthusiastic about that commission. Excuse me.
I think that's a great idea, Alan.
Okay, Alan. Good call.
So do we have to nominate Natasha or do we just, how does this, does this work the same way?
I'm going to apologize in advance, my dogs might start barking, but yes, so we could probably do these as a group and then we can kind of confirm the chair and then the members with a motion and a roll call.
Would anybody else like to be part of Parks and Creek?
Um, I would do it. I would, I would.
Okay.
But if, but if Dora, if, well, Sheri's not here to speak for herself, but if Bob, if you want to stay on, I mean, I'm happy to stay with special events. There wasn't a whole lot this year, so you know.
You worked so hard with special events last year, I just might take special events this year.
So.
My suggestion would be we leave Birdie on this commission because I know she visits the parks with her grandkids, I think.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
She's not here.
Yep. If you want to stay on, that's fine by me. I'll stay on special events, or if you'd rather go to special events, I'll swap with you, either way.
If, I will take Parks and Creek if no one else, because just because I go with my kids on the trail. So it's kind of nice to look around while I'm doing that.
Okay.
Okay.
So all, should I motion?
So I'm not hearing any changes other than the chair. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So yes, so Commissioner Mitchell, you can go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, I motion to appoint Chair, Sharon Teeter to Chair of the Parks and Creek Trail and the other members will be Sheri Doherty and Bob Fidrich.
I'll second that.
Do we vote again?
Yes, roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham.
Yes.
See, Commissioner Shibashi?
Yes.
Commissioner Teeter?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidrich, or I'm sorry, Chair Fidrich?
Yes.
And Chair Mitchell?
Yeah, Commissioner, sorry. Yeah, Commissioner.
Thank you, sorry. All in favor then?
Okay.
All right, so the next committee would be trees. If there's any changes to that one or leave as is.
Well, should we switch up the chairmanship this year or not, just to kind of, for all of them or?
It's totally up to you guys. You can leave them as is. You know, as it was pointed out, it was kind of a blank year for us, so you know, not a lot actually happened.
Maybe with, with Vice Chair LaRaz being Vice Chair, maybe Alan Ishibashi would like to be Chair of the trees.
Sure. I like Bites being the chair, but that's fine, I'll be the chair.
It's hard to
Yeah.
Point somebody who's not here.
That's, that's the cost of not being here.
True.
I can be the chair, that's no problem. That's what everyone wants.
We'll make him the Chair of the special events instead. So Natasha needs a motion, I believe, right?
So we're clear, so I motion that the members stay the same. Commissioner Allen Ishibashi and Commissioner Betts.
I'll second that.
I think, I think that the members stay the same, yeah, there you go.
Members stay the same.
That the chair switches from
Allen, right?
Yeah, it goes from LaRaz to Allen.
I'll second that.
Roll call. I can't, you have Chairman Fidrich making the motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a second, we have a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let me go ahead and do roll call for approval. Let's see, let me get this right. Vice Chair Abraham.
Yes.
Commissioner Ishibashi.
Yes.
Commissioner Teeter.
Yes.
Chair Fidrich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Thank you. All approved.
Okay, so now we go to special events, correct?
Yes.
So Chair Mitchell, do you want to stay as the Chair of that one?
I can unless Vice Chair LaRaz would rather be the Chair.
I'm happy to be the Chair. Do we, yeah, I'm happy to be the Chair.
Okay.
It's a big task.
Yeah, for the, all those special events for 2021.
All right, so I'll make a motion for the committee of special events, there will be Abraham and members will remain the same, mutual and Bites.
Second that.
And let's do a roll call vote. Chair Abraham.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Abraham, excuse me. Commissioner Shibashi.
Yes.
Commissioner Teeter.
Yes.
Chair Fidrich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
All in favor, thank you.
Great, now that we got to the most difficult part of the meeting, let's go to the staff reports and we have up next Parks.
Item C still under new business.
I'm sorry, do we have to go through each one of these?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have the committee assignments now, the commission work plan, I'm sorry?
From this point, I can share my screen to show you the fiscal 21 work plan and goals. Just one second. Okay. Is everyone able to see this, okay? Okay, so this is the existing work plan and the goals from, that we were developed last year. And due to the current situation with the pandemic, we might want to have some discussion as to what these look like. This can be a working document for us. I know that the city council would like for these to be submitted and sent to them prior to their council priority session. If we could do, you know, majority of the legwork tonight and then we can revisit it at the February meeting or we could complete it tonight, it's definitely at your discretion, so I'm happy to kind of take live notes and while we have a discussion and go from there.
Are all of these still on at this point? Due to the pandemic, I go, I was just looking at some of the events.
Yeah, so that is a significant thing, so the fun runs have switched to a virtual opportunity. Parks tour, we haven't really done that due to the, you know, pandemic, last year we weren't really meeting, the same with holding a park recommission meeting in a park, that didn't happen. Volunteer projects are also kind of in a holding pattern due to, you know, everything and volunteer projects, bunnies and bonnets I cannot see happening. Todd Arbor Day not going to be happening.
Well, Arbor Day happens every year, whether we, whether we can gather or not, so it might be virtual this year, but we will do something. Obviously, it won't be the same type of event, so there may be a way to participate, but it certainly wouldn't be the same. And then with regard to some of your other items that are, that are coming across as, you know, on the upper part of the page, probably the opportunity to comment and participate in the general plan update has probably now closed because that document really has gone back to council, so I could see that coming off the list. You always get the chance to do the annual Parkland, you know, you always get to review the, the, the annual allocations for the, for the park dedication fund, so that may be one that you want to consider leaving. We would like you to review all park improvement projects, but I do have to say that with, with John D. Morgan about ready to go under construction and Campbell Park is now getting ready for plans and specs or actually plans and specs are being done. I don't know that we're going to be bringing forward any other improvement projects over the next fiscal year. And then related to that, we wouldn't need the ad hoc subcommittee for the John D. Morgan Budside renovation either, so out of those top four, you may find that only one of those is still relevant, so we may have to look for some other things. You know, you know, even if we want to be on the optimistic side, it might be worth putting a few things out there, but those would certainly probably be recommended for, for removal from the, from the work plan.
Would it make sense to add a light item? You said you're, we're starting the work on the John D. Morgan Park, it'd be great if there was a session or on a weekend, all of us could walk it and kind of see you know, how it's going along the way, so to speak.
Yeah, I think it would be, that's, that's a very good suggestion, so I think if we wanted to add something about, you know, even if we had to do it individually and then kind of, you know, I think we could discuss our findings at an upcoming meeting, but that there, there could be something related to, to touring and discussing the progress of the JDM all-inclusive playlot.
And the Campbell Park, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, Campbell Park, yeah, actually, actually, both of those will happen over, over the next year. I mean, they'll just be phased out a little bit, a little bit differently. You can certainly entertain some level of planning and participating for maybe a John D. Morgan, you know, grand opening or rededication event, which, which again, could be, could be virtual. You never know by then, but I mean, I think we're going to want to recognize that as a city in whatever way, shape or form that we take that on.
Absolutely. That's a great idea.
I'm not seeing too much else though in the, in the CIP in terms of future park development over the next year, I mean, other than what you've already seen.
Is there kind of, you said there's not too much with parks, is there kind of a a next project down the road that we should start to do some preliminary, are we looking at this year? I don't know, whether it be the pool or something else that we're starting to plan for something three, four or five years from now?
Well.
Like the track resurfacing?
The track, yeah, I was thinking track.
Actually, the track would, would, would be interesting. I mean, we were probably going to want to have, it's, I'm glad that you mentioned that because I neglected to, to recall the track, so the track is certainly up for, for a resurfacing sometime in the next calendar year, so the question remains whether we're going to be able to do that at, in the second half of this fiscal year or it's going to roll into next fiscal year, but in any event, it should happen over the year 2021. We're just kind of trying to work out some outside funding with the county that we might, we may get through the CDBG program. But certainly, you know, I don't quite know what to suggest to you on that, but I think there might be some level of, of review and tracking of the, of the track resurfacing project. And then the other project that's, a couple other projects come to mind that I'll throw out for your consideration is I think we're still showing a renovation for, for Virginia Park, but that probably wouldn't be out till about fiscal year 24. But, but you know, it might be worth, you know, getting some early input on what's missing or what's lacking or what could be improved at that site. And then the other, the other project that comes to mind, and I don't quite have my arms around how we're going to do this yet, but it looks as though we're going to get some funding from the, from the ownership of the prune yard. And there may be an effort to construct a spur trail right at the edge of the prune yard parking lot, kind of at the base of Highway 17 on the prune yard side that would connect you from Campbell Avenue all the way back up to where the prune yard parking garage is and kind of puts you back on the trail. So kind of add to the, to the bike and ped friendliness of, of the prune yard. So we have a program, we haven't accepted that money yet and we haven't programmed it yet, but, but if we, if we do work out a funding agreement, that could be a project for maybe the second half of this calendar year, but you know, we probably wouldn't get to construction this year, but you'd probably have the opportunity to, you know, to provide input on the design and then review the design as it moves forward.
So I mean, my question, do we get that specific, can we just, do we just lump it into one and say review and prioritization of FY 2022 projects?
Yeah, that, that's probably safer because if priorities change, then we'd have to go back and and, and edit the work plan, so I think if you keep it generic, I think that's prob, that's probably for the better. That's a good suggestion.
Is there anything related to the Santa Moss Aquino Trail? Any, will that?
Not at the moment. I think right now, we're kind of feeling like we've, we've adopted the environmental agreement and we don't have a logical next step right now until we can identify a grant opportunity, but it, but it may be a work plan item that, that maybe staff or maybe you can ask that, 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 that staff will, will bring back, you know, grant opportunities and funding options for the trail as appropriate.
Fidrich, you had
What our new chair just suggested, we may not want to be as specific as saying the trail, we may want to say that for any and all projects.
Last bullet point, yeah.
So you want to change, I think, the last bullet point, right, to review and early input probably on, you know?
And prioritize, yeah.
Yeah, and prioritize.
And that way you can take off the two bullet points.
Early input on Virginia. Yeah.
Chair Fidrich too, you had made a comment in regards to the pool and yes, you know, there is no funding to fix that, so that is going to be something that we need to address in the coming years on how we, you know, manage that, so I know that there was work done in prior, in prior years, which is probably outdated at this point. All things said, but it'll still be a concern in the coming years, for sure.
If I played that Powerball tonight, I would have given some of that money towards the pool, but I forgot to go to 7-Eleven, darn it. And then for the bottom part, I, do you want to just keep that on there and just cross out as they don't happen?
Sure, so these things, I guess it would be these three bullet points that we could technically remove, correct?
I kind of like the, I like the planning and participating in the grand reopening.
Oh, sorry, I missed, yeah, keep that one.
Yeah.
So and tour and discuss progress? Or this one is the one where we could, we could remove, correct? It would be encompassed in this, this generic review, provide early input and prioritize fiscal 22 projects?
No, I think that's separate.
Yeah, I'd rather keep that one there because that project has started.
Okay, so I can pretty much take these ones out, so just for cleanliness of everything. So for work plan, it's conduct an annual review, the Parkland Dedication Fund, tour and discuss, got to spell things properly, progress of JDM all-inclusive and Campbell Park construction projects, planning and participating in grand reopening or unveiling event for all-inclusive park. And review, provide early input and prioritize fiscal 22 projects to encompass all projects listed above. Well, I'm going to take that out, so that's just my notes to myself. So as far as goals go, this is where we could maybe generalize a little bit more due to the current situation with special events and maybe have some, you know, goals of, you know, online virtual participation from commissioners and support and helping, you know, share the word and that kind of thing. So I'll mute myself for discussion.
Just, just one that might be missing there, so Todd, isn't Park Cleanup Day with the City of San Jose, wasn't that on Martha Nutter King Day last year?
It has been for about It it has been for about five or six years running.
Yeah.
And it's not going to be this year, which we're going to hear in our report out, but well, that's some early info for you there.
Could could that maybe be pushed to later in the year, or is that at this point gone, so to speak?
Well, no, it's definitely not gone. I I think whenever we can get back into the back into the business of of uh of managing large volunteer projects, you know, we're we're certainly going to want to do that. That's that's not. I mean, that's kind of one of our highlights, but we certainly have done other ones over the course of a year. And so I think once we kind of have a a green light, you know, when I mean, and this will take, you know, months, of course. Um, I think, you know, we we would not only pick up that event on an annual basis, but if there's a way we can pick it up, you know, three quarters of the way through the year, we'd certainly be open to that as well.
Yeah, okay.
It seems to me like some of these can be changed to like um, I don't see why, you know, right now we're in purple, but eventually we'll get back to red or orange, and we should be able to hold a social distance park and rec commission meeting in a park, I would think, at some point.
I hope so.
So I think.
We should leave all of these things here.
Yeah, some of these can, I think, stay on and and um
Just.
And they may change to virtual, but.
Just just ease for next year and just put maybe a condition and say, you know, as conditions permit or something, we do all this stuff. And just leave it open ended like that. You know, Oktoberfest, I I'm optimistic that the Oktoberfest run hopefully can happen. Obviously, Valentine's is too close.
Yeah.
But a lot of these other things, you know, bunnies and bonnet or the the bunnies and bonnets, that's probably art on the bubble. Probably not going to happen. But who knows? So I would I would suggest just bring a condition on these things, and as as it's available, we'll we'll do them. This will make it easier next year, too, because these things will all be listed still.
Actually, I had a question about uh, maybe this is specifically to Natasha about bunnies and bonnet. Um, was there any thought about having that one kind of like what we did with Santa this year? Santa drove around, you know, all the Campbell neighborhood?
Yeah, so the bunnies and bonnets parade is actually put on by the Downtown Campbell Business Association and the Chamber. It's a it's an event that they've done um and not not the city uh taking on that role. So it hasn't been um something we've done. We've the Carol of Lights used to be ran by the city, and then it got taken over by volunteers. Um, I think it was in oh nine when we had uh budget constraints then. So um so, yeah, um, it 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 could be something that they do. I'm just not certain. Yeah.
You know, the other thing, um, on that last point, collaborate with the Campbell Youth Commission. I mean, obviously, we didn't get an opportunity to do that this year, but I do think that that would be really important to keep on in the event that we could collaborate something with them. But the other commission that we may want to consider collaborating with is the Civic Improvement Commission with maybe some public art um ideas and projects for parks and public, you know, places. That was something that I know we had spoken about as we were reviewing the designs of the various parks where we could add some public art and maybe we could work with them on um, you know, some ideas of how we can get some more public art into Campbell Parks.
Great idea.
Okay, so as a quick recap, I have participate in community events, whether in person or virtual. Um, so maybe we just take out this participate in. We've got Arbor Day, Bunnies and Bonnets, Park Volunteer Projects, we'll make it plural because those happen all the time. And then we've got Oktoberfest and Valentine Fund runs, hold a PRC meeting in a park, conduct a parks tour, collaborate with the Campbell Youth Commission on an event or a joint PRC Yak meeting, collaborate with Civic Improvement Commission on potential public art projects in parks. Anything else? Comments?
I think it looks pretty good.
I I think if if I could suggest, this is where I thought um this is where I thought Commissioner Mitchell was going to go on this, and she went in different direction than I was thinking. Is that if if we are going to move forward with any any trail improvements, particularly that let that spur trail that I was talking about along the prune yard, you might have an opportunity to also collaborate with 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 our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So if you're looking to uh expand your collaboration opportunities, that might be another one for you to consider.
Yeah, that's a really goo- good point. Um, I and I forgot we are supposed to get this. I thought it was going to get added to the agenda, but I did and the I did attend the collaborative commission um, meeting um about a month and a half ago, about a month ago, and um learned from that meeting, you know, um, actually, how how we could have collaborated with the Bikes and Trails um Commission for the design of, you know, Campbell Park and um you know, who knew? I I didn't actually realize um that it would have saved actually probably both parties lots of time if um we had collaborated sooner, knowing that um their input, you know, how valuable their input is. So.
Good.
Let's let's add them to the list then.
Okay, that was my next question, so.
Yeah, let's add it. And I think that's a very, very good list.
Is that where we're going? Trail improvement ideas or concepts or?
Probably more um, well, I think that or yeah, concepts. I like that.
Okay. Um, so your options, Chair Fidrich, at this point is we could solicit a motion for the approval of the work planning calls for the year, or we could table the item for people to sit on it, and we can bring it back as unfinished business in February for final approval.
Well, we do have.
Additional ideas.
Yeah, we might still unmute. We we do have two people missing from this evening. They might have some input as well. Um, my suggestion would be to table it and approve it at the next meeting. That being said, I know we're jumping ahead of ourselves. Natasha, do we think there will be a meeting next month?
I'm going to be hopeful, yes.
Okay. Um, so so my suggestion would be to to just table and vote on it next month, but would love to get other people's input on that.
I think that's a great idea, mom.
Yeah. And Natasha, can you remind us when it's due to um city council?
So uh originally, city council priority session was supposed to be at the end of January, and that's been pushed back. So we have a little bit of leeway. Um, so your meetings are generally at the beginning of the month, so it provides me enough time to draft the memo and get that off to them um in the allotted time. So we're fine holding until February, and if they need something, this is at least a draft that I can share.
Okay.
So my notion would be then to take this list and approve it at the next meeting.
Yeah, so we don't need a motion. We can just table it, and I'll agendize it under unfinished business for next month for you guys to discuss further.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Good idea.
Okay, do we move on to the next item then? Okay. So if I have this right, the next item actually is committee reports. Um, so let's start with Parks and Creek Trail. Sharon, do you have anything you want to report?
No, except I'm probably out on the creek trail three and four times a week, and there's a lot of people out there. So I'm I'm grateful that the city keeps it open. Everyone's well, before the holidays, three quarters of the people had masks on. Since New Year's, half of them do not have masks on. So that's that's kind of concerning. Um, I did identify three homeless camps between um Bascom and Lee, and I think two of them may be even inhabited today. Um, oh, and then the other good thing, maybe Todd can talk about it. The Santa Clara Valley Water District is doing something with piping into the creek, and then Public Works is supposed to do something with painting at the Campbell Park. So that's all I have.
Um, just a quick question. So if I if I can at this point, so Todd, i- if there is a homeless situation, what what is the city's stance on that? I I don't even know.
Um, well, our stance has changed. Uh, what what we what we had been doing uh is we had been basically in close coordination with with the Santa Clara Valley Water District on all all these issues because because by and large, the trail um is on water district property. And all of the cities that maintain and operate their sections of trail, that being San Jose, Campbell, Los Gatos, and even the section that runs through the county park. Um, each of those entities really only has the the maintenance and operational responsibility for the width of the trail plus a few feet on on either side. So really, that's to help keep the trail clean, keep it safe, keep the trash and litter picked up. However, we know that the other issues kind of affect how the trail is used. And so for the past several years, we've been working in pretty close coordination uh with the water district. Sometimes the city of San Jose, when you get down closer to Bascom, and sometimes Caltrans, when you're along moving along the freeway to we've we've posted uh encampments for cleanup. We've used, we've involved our 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 own PD um with 72-hour posting. We've cleaned up uh some of the encampments and basically kind of moved things along. Right now, though, the way things are in the pandemic is uh we're really not doing that right now. So things are kind of on hold. We're we're not uh posting things for removal, where we're not asking people to move along. We're doing our best to keep things clean, and I'm sure Bob can talk a little bit more about that as when if and when we we get to that point, which I'm I'm sure we will. But but we're not doing the kind of all out, what what some people might call uh, you know, homeless evictions. Those just are not happening right now.
Good. Okay, then let's move over to the Chair Committee Report. Chair Abraham, you have anything to report when it comes to, I'm sorry, trees?
Uh, no, there's nothing to report on trees that I know of.
Okay. Anybody else from that committee? Okay, then we'll move to the third one, which is special events. Chair Mitchell. You're you're on mute, Tracy.
Yeah, unfortunately, not too much to report. I'm hoping with the vaccine coming out and people, you know, getting vaccinated, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll at least get to celebrate, you know, um, the opening of our All Inclusive Park or something of that nature. So but as of now, nope, nothing to report.
Okay. Okay, then we'll close that. And now we will move to staff reports. And we have parks and uh Todd, you're up.
Okay, so thank you for that. What I'm going to do, I'm going to ask Bob to start us off. Uh, Bob probably knows a little bit more about the day to day operations and things going on. So and uh well, after Bob gives his report, I I have a couple of things I I'd like to chime in and add as well. So go ahead and take it away, Bob.
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Todd actually pretty much summarized the homeless situation uh in the uh Los Gatos Creek area. And I wanted to let you know that uh Caltrans is uh gearing up to do re uh homeless removals. Unfortunately, like Todd said, you can't ev- evict anybody unless they have a place to go. So they don't have any place to go. So right now, I I've seen uh Caltrans repairing the fence, and uh we've taken a tour of uh the Los Gatos Creek, showing where the homeless are, trying to get some uh some fencing up to help them uh reduce the amount of people that are coming from the freeway and just uh impact their ability to to come and go easily, make it not as as friendly to be there. But everybody using the the site would be in a very good space. Uh, we do have uh our friend, uh Steve Holmes from the Clean Creeks Coalition, and he has done some cleanup of material that may be uh abandoned or just some uh debris. So there is activity of people uh doing their best to clean up that the the creek, but our hands really are uh tied. Uh, we're also uh suggesting to Caltrans to replace their locks that were missing on some of their gates, again, to reduce the the ease in which people can come and go on the uh trail. So that's moving forward. Uh, speaking of the trail, the street department was out uh yesterday and today doing some uh root cutting and uh pavement repair on the trail over by Campbell Park. So looking forward to see seeing some improvements in in that area. So that's that's uh positive news. Uh, and I I agree, the use of the the trail is unbelievable, and the parks, very, very popular. Uh, one of the things that's hitting us is uh people going to restaurants and then having somewhere to eat. They bring it to the park. Garbage cans fill up immediately. Usually, we don't have coverage in uh just January for parks, but this year we definitely do to keep the uh the place looking uh clean. Uh, another note, uh, we did have a this is kind of a a interesting, I guess, we had a retirement for Dave Olson. He was the lead worker at the Community Center. He's moved on to part two of his life, and uh he's very, very happy, and he's he's uh he's left the the area. So let me see if there's anything else. Oh, rain. We really need some rain. Uh, it's very, yeah, we had a little bit of rain, but we are having to activate some of our irrigation. Of course, we hate to do that because you don't know when the next rain's coming, but if we have overseeding uh that we've done in fall, we still need to uh apply some rain, excuse me, some irrigation, or uh the seed will be wasted. So we're trying to do a very careful balancing act. And that's uh my parks uh report out.
Thank you, Bob. And then if I if I could jump in on a couple of things, I I wanted to see if I could get maybe you to touch on one other item, if you would. I I know you guys have recently done some re landscaping out in the island at John D. Morgan. Did you want to talk about that project at all? And then I'll add two other things.
Yeah, thank you, Todd. Uh, at John Morgan Park on the Rincon Avenue side, there's a uh turnaround, and it uh allows people to cir- it's just basically a median island at the end of the the road, and that median island had birch trees on it with ivy and weeds. And it was very uh a very high water use situation because birch trees on their own need a lot of water. Ivy is very aggressive, so it would take the water that we would apply, and we'd have ivy growing where uh over the curb and gutter. So we uh instituted a new design. It's it's uh bay friendly. And what that means is we remove the remove the ivy, uh scrape down to clean soil. We added a new irrigation system with what's referred to as point source. Point source just means that you put the water right where the plant's at. So there's no spray heads. That reduces weeds. We chose uh water saving plants, and we put in some uh large boulders for some uh visual deterrent, and we planted a new type of birch tree, which is a river birch, which is uh rather drought tolerant. So we didn't go so far as to remove all the birches, but it it looks really quite nice, and we're really looking forward to seeing those birch trees take off and uh beautify that area. Save labor, save water. Thank you.
So as Bob was talking, my list of two things turned into a list of four things. So um that's probably a good thing, I think, except you get to hear me talk a little longer. I just wanted to acknowledge all the efforts of of not only our park staff, but of our public works maintenance staff in general and putting up all the holiday decorations in and around the downtown area. And there's they're they're slowly coming down, but as even as we're taking them down, we are starting to get some, you know, our positive feedback is is continuing. So the last I checked, we still had a few lights left to go in the Orchard City Green area. Uh, but but things did look really nice throughout the holidays, and 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 now they're coming down as we enter into the new year and 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 get. But but things did look really nice throughout the holidays, and 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 now they're coming down as we enter into the new year and and get settled. Also wanted to highlight that for the John D. Morgan project, I wasn't sure if I had said this earlier or not, but we did issue the the notice to proceed. And the first day that the contractor will be on the job will be January 25th. We're trying to put together a virtual groundbreaking that 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 at least one, possibly a couple council members will be involved in. We don't quite know how we're going to do that yet, but so it might be a stitching together of some sound bites and maybe some video of the actual demo going on. I suspect that you won't see any real demo going on the first day. I think that day will be all about putting up temporary construction fencing. But hopefully, the demo will begin probably later that week. So you could look for that if you're out and about visiting John D. Morgan. Also wanted to let you know that we have talked about the 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 about the mural that was going to be done at the creekside underpass along the Los Gatos Creek Trail. And that was originally, you know, we did have the art contest and and a selection was made as to what the final mural will look like. And the original intent was to get that mural up over the months of November and December. But that's not going to happen. So I think just because it's so damp and and even though it's not raining, it's not an area that has that has gotten a lot of light. And so I think our our volunteers are a little worried how the paint might cure. And so they're kind of pushing that off a little bit to see if we can get to some warmer temperatures. So I'm thinking that is something that we may not actually see installed until about March. But if that changes, we'll certainly update you at the next meeting. And then lastly, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on Measure O, which typically doesn't have a lot to do with the the Parks and Rec Commission, but it's an area of interest, I think, for everyone nevertheless. So we did have a special meeting with council earlier this week. It was on Monday, and we showed conceptual designs for both the police building and for the renovation of the library. And so a preferred concept was selected for the library that will move forward. And we've got a little bit of work to do on the PD building because we really only showed one concept. And council had some questions about how the building was sited and what, you know, what some of the great challenges were. So we will be going back to council shortly with with some other options on on how we cite the a new police building. But but one of the issues that comes up with is with regard to the library in that we are preparing for the library staff and program to move out of that building so we can prepare it for construction. And I'm not sure if I shared this with you before or not, but we actually are are looking at a temporary site at the community center. And so we're moving forward with some improvements in the E Wing. It would be room E46 in particular, how we could improve that room. It's only about a 1,500 square foot room, but but that's kind of what the library is looking for in a temporary facility. And so we would add, it's it's a it's a very large classroom at this point. It we it it kind of used to be the one that had all the stoves lined up where where things like cooking and such were taught. So but it still has kind of the old single entrance classroom, you know, single entry. And so we're looking at adding a an automatic sliding door, maybe on the side that that is kind of a blank wall now that faces the Orchard, the Orchard City banquet hall. So we could have kind of a secondary, you know, nice entry out there as well. And then the entry that we have now would would serve as as the emergency or secondary access and adding a book drop. And this would probably be a lot more cost effective than what we were talking about earlier where we'd have to go look for perhaps some private property in a commercial area to house the library. So as we continue to move forward with that, we'll keep you updated. But this could be the library's home for somewhere between, you know, two and a half to three years. Let's see how how fast we can get the library renovated. But we're targeting getting the library program moved by sometime in the spring. And so you might see some other improvements out there at the community center as we as we hold the library. And then kind of as a secondary benefit to that is what, after we perform these improvements and then years down the line, when the library actually moves into their new home, we we we, I think we feel like we've upgraded E46 to where it it now might have a a higher and better purpose because it'll be better outfitted to to hold events and meetings as well. So that's where we're headed with that. Thank you.
And Todd, quick question on the library, is that a renovation or is that a tear down or rebuild?
It's essentially a renovation, but it's going to be taken down to to basically not much being left, right? So I mean, all we're really going to have left is the shell of the building. They're not taking the roof out, though. But so there's actually some, there's actually some reasonable mechanical systems still left in that building that are on the roof. So it's kind of a balancing act between taking out all the things that don't work, which is a lot, and making it look like a new building, which it really effectively will be. But it does have a few positive attributes out there as well. And then I think one other thing that you may want to note, because it it has such a prominent interface with Orchard City Green is that, you know, as as you've no doubt seen over the concert season, we've got those berms out there that kind of slope up, and then they end with with these kind of, you know, large cinder block type retaining walls. And those are not really conducive to to allowing natural light to get down to that lower level. So as I say, we're going to renovate the building, but I suspect that many of those walls around the outside are going to be removed and will have more of a of a contouring slope that, you know, we're going to try to preserve as many trees as possible. But I don't see those berms continuing to slope up. I think they slope up to a point where maybe we can still preserve the trees, but that's the point at which they begin sloping back down. So the intent there is to get more light and then kind of, you know, make it more of a user-friendly environment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Todd, I just want to say I really appreciate that report. I for one, I go to the library every week, and I really appreciate that the library staff is there to let us check out our books at the doorway and so forth. And so it's good to hear that I can still go to the library or the community center and do the same thing. Thank you.
Can you remind us when John D. Morgan Park is, the construction is anticipated to be done? Is it the summer or when exactly is that supposed to be?
Yeah, it's 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 looking, I mean, we're going to give them, I think, 150 days for construction, which takes us from January through June. But as you know, from from, you know, from what you do, we we will then add days if they get rained out and such. So, you know, if things go well, it would be June. But as you heard Bob say earlier, we need rain. So if we get rain, we're going to probably push that out, you know, a few weeks. But it'll probably be in that June to July timeframe. And then that's kind of what we're counting on as the time we would take Campbell Park down. So so we're not going to issue any sort of notice to proceed on Campbell Park until we're until we're reopening John D. Morgan. But that's the general timeline.
It has to be done by November, right? It has to. Right?
Yes, it does. Actually, yes, that's a, that's a, you've got a great memory. So, yeah, we we actually have a grant constraint with that. We have to have the project done and all of the books closed and accounting for the funds.
Yeah.
All that all has to be done by November. That's correct.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, comments? Todd and Bob, thank you very much. And now we'll move to Natasha, Recreation and Community Services.
All right. For just to spin off on the library, they had a special meeting on Monday. So if you're interested in looking at what the designs look like, the they're in the packet from Monday on the Agenda Center. So for recreation, the Heritage Theater and the Historical Museum, they remain closed through the pandemic. The museum has been working very diligently on extensive virtual programming. So they are doing a history at home as well as a Membership Monday event. So if you're a museum member, it's free. And if you're not a member, you can just pay to participate in it. There was a January History at Home event. It got moved to April. So if you see it on their website, it is being moved to April. The next one coming up is February 12th. It's with the author Sana Sareer, I'm going to mess up that name. And she's presenting her novel, A Door Between Us, and the tickets are $10. And then for Membership Monday, it'll happen on March 1st at 7:00 PM. It's the Holocaust speaker from the J F C S Holocaust Center. And like I said, those events will continue on a monthly basis, and you can check it out at campbellmuseums.com for more information. The Campbell Museum Foundation is also recruiting new board members. So if you know of anyone who might be interested in serving on that board, please share that website with them, and they can do that. And then if you haven't checked it out yet, the Campbell Museum has been working very hard on their YouTube channel on the What's in the Box series while we've been closed. And so they've been putting out these videos of bringing, essentially bringing artifacts out and explaining what they are and sharing historical information. They're really interesting, so I would highly recommend checking those out. And then in addition, while we were in this pandemic, we were we had a company looking to kind of expand their business and wanted to do a virtual tour of the Isley House and Carriage House. So we now have live on our website, virtual tours of both of those buildings with points of interest, locations and artifacts for you kind of step on and kind of walks you through the different rooms. Not, all the information isn't all there, but just some highlights that are given. So it's really nice. While we reopen the skate park and it's now free, it is now closed during the stay-at-home order. So it'll reopen once the stay-at-home order is lifted and we go back to a purple zone. But it was working well and, you know, some speed bumps along the way. But we're happy that that can be open at some point. Our outdoor fitness programs and our laps forming also continue to be heavily used. And we're doing the best we can trying to keep things outdoor. So while Bob, once rain, we're really hopeful for no rain so we can continue activities outside. Same with our youth dance classes and sports and things for youth. So our preschool is also operating. It's on a modified program, but we were able to add one more class for the January through May. Our virtual Valentine fundraiser will be taking place February 13th through the 21st. So the registration is currently open online. It's $20 for adults and then $12 for ages 20 and under. So Chair Fidrich, thank you for wearing our Oktoberfest one, looking snazzy. So they will continue, they'll have that event as well, and it'll be a T-shirt pickup for for the event. So just something fun to kind of keep us all connected. Our senior nutrition program also continues to be servicing about 75 to 80 seniors on a daily basis on a takeaway meals only. And then last but not least, Donna Rice, who has been our Recreation Coordinator in our Adult Center, she will be retiring at the end of February after 37 years of service with the city of Campbell. So she will be recognizing her in March at the council meeting for her for her service to the city. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions.
No questions?
I have a question. I'm just curious, you know, with everything that's going on, like, how is the the parks? Like, how are you guys doing? Like, you know, without all the youth sports and whatnot for the fields and income from that? Like, how's the, how's the program doing financially?
Parks or recreation?
Well, Parks and Recreation, I don't know, both, I guess.
Yeah, no, so it's definitely troubling right now. We are not, when we developed our budget, we were very hopeful that by fall, we would have some semblance of normalcy, and that has not happened. Room rentals are a huge portion of what we do as well, and we're not allowed to have anybody in our building. So it's very challenging for our staff. We're doing everything possible to operate the programs that we can and the cohorts and within the guidelines. But it is very, it's very challenging for us right now. And I am hopeful that with the budget process that we're facing, that it'll be understood that once we can go back to normal, we can kind of ramp up quickly. But if we have to make some structural changes during this process, that could be very challenging for us to to rebound quickly. So, you know, it's a give and take, but it is a definite challenging situation right now.
I'll say my daughter signed up for tennis class twice, and both times was canceled. So I'm assuming that getting people to sign up for stuff is probably a little harder than normal, too.
So we just started with a new contractor for tennis, and he is more expensive. And so I think they were working with him to modify the, like, time and the time that's allotted so that it was a more reasonable cost. So I'm hopeful that this next round won't have that same problem.
Yeah, we're going to try again in February.
Okay.
Great.
And we do have our new recreation system that's up and running. And not that camps are going to be like they how they used to be, but it is much more user-friendly. So if you haven't built an account yet, you know, you can go on and do that. So when your class comes back, you're ready.
Great. Any other thoughts, comments? Okay, thank you, Natasha. Okay, let's move to the good of the game. Anybody want to step forward and start? Not much good going on.
I mean, I'd just like to thank, you know, Parks and Recreation staff for what you're doing. I mean, people appreciate it. Parks are busy. I mean, I know our parks are super busy. So everyone, I think this whole pandemic, I think I said this last time, it's really making people appreciate parks, right? So this is, this is going to be something that I think we can leverage in the future, right? How important parks are. And then Bob, is that the Dunder Mifflin conference room behind you? I want to just, you know, point that out, too.
That's the conference room in Scranton, Pennsylvania.
Yeah.
From the office.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I will just say, I know Natasha, it has to be really challenging for recreation right now. And I know you guys are putting in a ton of work trying to think of out-of-the-box ideas of how to keep things going. So I know that cannot be easy. So I know you guys are doing, you know, such a great job in doing everything you can to bring in, you know, as much income as you possibly can, given, you know, the circumstances. And and the parks and parks, people, maintenance people, I mean, you guys always do a fabulous job. So like Alan said, parks, people aren't going to take parks for granted anymore, that's for sure. Especially with the playgrounds being shut down for so many months. And families, you know, are actually enjoying, you know, you see actually families at parks, not just like a mom and a daughter, you actually see, you know, the whole family at parks now. So it's kind of refreshing, to be honest with you. So thanks for all your hard work, guys.
Anybody else? Yeah.
I, I have to say, I went to the to the track for the first time in a long, long time, and it was on a Sunday during Farmer's Market. And it was so nice to be back out and to see people on the track running. And my boys got out there, and I got to enjoy some quiet Farmer's Market shopping.
I have nothing to add. We've been kind of like staying in the house a lot the past month. But fingers crossed that the next few months will start to get a lot better. So, okay, we'll move on. Before we adjourn, Natasha, should we talk about the date of the next meeting?
So the next regular meeting is scheduled for February 3rd. Is that a conflict?
No, it's not for me. I just wanted to make sure everybody else was okay with that. Okay, great.
Let me make sure I got the date right before I say that. Yes, February 3rd is correct.
So I guess I'll close the meeting. Tracy, I just got your gavel here. Thank you for setting it right over.
Nice, love it.
So I'll adjourn the meeting, and that's it.